Good evening. Welcome to the Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority regularly scheduled meeting. It is April the first, 2025, approximately 7:00 PM. We're gathered here in council chambers of the Centennial Building, the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma, at 12 South Fifth Street. This evening, we'll have our invocation given by Pastor Griffin Smith, followed by a flag salute. Please rise if you're able.
Let's pray. God, you are a good and you are a loving God. Father, we thank you for our community. We thank you for the wonderful families that you have brought to live here in Yukon. What a blessing it is to be a part of this wonderful community. We thank you, Lord. Lord, we, we thank you also for our city council. Thank you for these servants who spend their time and energy serving our community. Lord, help us tonight. Help us to act with great character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding, with grace, and with love for one another and for our community. Lord, we ask that you lead our leaders. Give them knowledge. Give them understanding. Give them wisdom to help move Yukon forward. Lord, we ask that you would bless each member of our city council. Lord, give, give each of us in this room today, give us humility, give us guidance, and give us a productive meeting this evening. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Pillmore?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Selby?
Here.
Shriver?
Here.
Zimmerman?
At this time, we'll have three proclamations. The National Telecommuter, Telecommunicator Week proclamation, the Yukon Palm Squad proclamation, and the Vietnam Veterans Proclamation.
Excuse me, I email, I text you that the veterans were not going to be here tonight.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to share a little bit about the Vietnam Veteran Program that we had on Saturday, but we'll begin with the National Telecommunicator Week proclamation. Here's the proclamation. Whereas in 1991, congressional resolution named the second full week in April of every year National Telecommunicator Week. And 911 is the hotline for help for people in emergency situations, and the 911 call taker's voice is the first assurance that help is on the way. And 911 professionals regularly meet the challenges of extremely stressful situations with calmness and efficiency. When an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of liberty. And the safety of these emergency responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from the citizens who telephone the 911 Communication Center. And public dispatchers are the heart of public safety, providing assistance before any other emergency services arrive on scene. Public safety dispatchers are a vital link for our emergency responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And public safety dispatchers contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fire, and treatment of injuries and illnesses on a daily basis. Each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her daily job duties. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Yukon declares the week of April 13th to 19th to be National Telecommunicator Week. Thank you all for your service. I'll just add one note, that I attended a wonderful class of the Citizens Police Academy, and these telecommunicators shared their, their day-to-day job. It was very inspiring and much more complicated than I ever understood. Thank you. At this time, we'll have the Palm Squad join us. Come on up anywhere on either side. The other half can come on this side. Thank you Yukon High School Palm Team for joining us today. We'll give the proclamation. The Yukon High School Palm Team has demonstrated outstanding dedication, perseverance, and teamwork throughout its season. After countless hours of rigorous training, discipline, and determination, the team has showcased their exceptional talent and spirit and competition. And the team has represented Yukon with pride and sportsmanship at the Universal Dance Association National Dance Team Competition, held from January 31st to February 2nd, 2025. In Orlando, Florida, the Yukon Palm Squad earned the prestigious title of national champions in the large varsity Division One Game Day Classification, bringing great honor and recognition to our school and our city. The members of the team include Emmeline Jarvis, Laney Carlton, Carly Heitzman, Carolyn Weems, Kiersey Palmer, Charlie Bell, Brooklyn Johnson, Hillary Musselman, Alexa Combs, Isabella Ayer, Kinzie Aaron, Shaylee Haythorne, Bree Lee Embry, Macy O'Malley, Lola Yonda, Kirsten Smith, Leila Khan, Ava Thomas, Cloy Frazier, Kenzie Aliff, Bailey Jew, Addie Salazar. With the coaches and sponsors Meredith Dukes, Kaylee Sager, and McKenna Bell. We commend the coaches, sponsors, and faculty, families, and supporters who played an invaluable role in sponsoring the success of these student athletes and providing unwavering encouragement and guidance. The accomplishments of this team will forever be an inspiration to young student athletes in our community. I, Brian Pillmore, Mayor of the City of Yukon, do declare Tuesday, April 1st, as Yukon High School Palm Squad Day. Thank you all. Lastly, I'd just briefly like to say that we had a program for the Vietnam Veterans this past Saturday, I believe that was March 29th. On, on this occasion, we heard stories from multiple facets of the Vietnam Veterans experience, both at home and abroad. It was a moving ceremony, and we recognized Vietnam Veterans Day as the 29th day of March, 2025. Thank you all. Okay, I'm very pleased to have so many people joining us. I just wanted to make a couple of comments to begin. As a reminder regarding procedure and decorum of this city council meeting, we follow Robert's Rules of Order to ensure our discussion is orderly, respectful, and efficient. The city council may only speak to items as they appear on the agenda at the time each item is formally considered. The visitors section, placed later in the meeting due to the number of items that require attention before staff may be dismissed, provides an opportunity for any attendee to address the council on any matter related to the city of Yukon or the Yukon Municipal Authority for up to three minutes. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the Yukon Municipal Authority Consent Docket. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 4th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, may you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman? Shriver?
Yes.
Sorry.
At this time, we'll recess as Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Similarly, we'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 4th, 2024, payment of material claims in the amount of $2,564,693.90, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus, and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal. The request from Richard Shane Swearengen with Global Equity LLC for a final plat located at 1401 Lake Shore Drive is recommended by the Planning Commission. The request by Richard Shane Swearengen with Global Equity LLC for a letter of credit for public sewer improvements located at 1401 Lake Shore Drive is recommended by the Planning Commission. The final plat for ONQ located at 2300 North Frisco Road is recommended by the Planning Commission, appointing Tamara Vickery as OKMRF Authorized Agent for the City Retirement Plans. I make a motion to approve all items A through G on the consent docket, with the exception of item H, which will be moved to, to be heard in regular order following the last item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have reports from city officials, beginning with an update on Hillcrest Park, as well as Kimball Pool progress by Parks and Rec Director Ryan McClure.
Are we going to discuss item H?
Ma'am, we're going to move it to regular order at the end of the last item, as I, as I mentioned during the motion.
Good evening. I'm happy to announce that we were able to open the Hillcrest Playground on Thursday, March 13th, a few weeks ago, and would like to invite anyone that hasn't had a chance to go out and, and see that playground, to go out and check it out, enjoy it. I think you'll have a good time out there. During our, our final inspection of the playground, prior to opening the playground, we noticed a, a safety concern with the bench swings, and, and made the decision to remove those bench swings at that time, due to an issue with them tipping when you go to get out of those. So we approached that topic with the playground company. They then approached that topic with the manufacturer of the swings, and they are in the process right now of sending us some new bench swings that will have some new connection points that should alleviate that issue, the tipping safety issue there. That's expected to ship to us on April 16th, and then as soon as those are received, those will be installed. So that, that should be in the next couple of weeks that those will be shipped. In the meantime, everything else is safe and ready to use out there, so again, would invite anyone to, to come out and, and check out the playground when you get a chance. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address those as well.
I had the kids and cousins out there the other day, I think it was Friday or Saturday, and they had a blast. Had a blast. Everybody was doing something different. I think at one point, I counted three games of tetherball going on at the same time, so well done. You guys did a great job.
Glad to hear it. Thank you. And then moving on to an update on Kimball Bay Pool. If you've driven by there, you've seen a lot going on. We have hydroescapes out there working on the sand blasting repair and the epoxy painting project. They're moving along really quickly and successfully on that project. They, they first started with the sand blasting and then the chipping of the gutters. They chipped the gutters just because the, the sand blasting, we had concerns would, would tear up the gutters. But that's all to prepare the surface for the repairs and then the primer and the paint. There were a few longer cracks on the bottom of the pool that have been repaired, and then some larger cracks in the gutter, in the gutter system that were repaired as well. But overall, we're very pleased with what was discovered compared to what we discovered at City Splash last year, which was a lot more cracking in bigger areas. That's not the case at Kimball, so that, that's really good news. They've also covered all the divots on the walls and in the gutters with hydraulic cement, which will resolve hopefully any issues of losing water. It will also make for a smoother surface and a safer surface, both on the walls and on the gutters. And then the final step in that process is the priming and the painting. The priming, as of a couple hours ago, they had almost one full layer of the primer on there. And then weather-dependent, they'll get started on the painting as well. So we would anticipate that project will be done within the next week, if not a little bit sooner, depending on the weather. A few other things we have going on out at Kimball, as I mentioned in a previous council meeting, we'll be replacing the fencing out there. We are getting a, a couple of updated quotes for that. We're going to expand the deck area, which has been a common concern out at Kimball, which is not having enough deck space, places to sit, that sort of thing. So the fence will now be around the full deck and provide some extra space out there for people to sit, which will be nice. So that's with the fencing. We also have on the agenda this evening to replace the, the cantilever, the shade structure out there, which would be a cantilever in place of the metal shade structures out there. So that'll be for your consideration later this evening for the agenda item. We are also looking at...
Excuse me, Mr. McClure. Yes. Point of order, sir. Sir? Sir, Mr. McClure has the floor at the moment. If you'd like to take the floor and speak on an item, please approach the podium. Thank you. Thank you.
There's also a, a plan in place for the baby pool area out there. We've discovered that the pool is no longer functional or safe, the baby pool area. The plan is to, to fill in the baby pool, remove the fence that is around the baby pool, add some turf out there, and a shade umbrella in that area to, to make for an additional deck space out there, and just another, another nice area for people to hang out by the pool, and actually have a functional area over there as opposed to a fenced-off area that no one can get into.
And I hate that. I had so many good memories with my babies out there in the baby pool.
Some other potential purchases, as the budget allows, with additional, the prospect of additional shade area out there, adding additional tables, chairs, pool chairs, that sort of thing. We'll likely have the budget to be able to do that. We're also looking at adding some pool steps out there to make it more accessible to get in and out of the pool, which has been a, a concern out at Kimball. Also, as I mentioned in previous meeting, a Kimball, the chemical area repair with the covering out there in that fenced-in area. And then another part of the project I mentioned was the potential for a new slide. It does not look like that is going to fit in the budget this time around, just based on costs that we've gotten back so far. We're going to continue to look into that, but at this point, it doesn't look like that'll fit into the budget this time around. But overall, the Kimball project's going really well. It's moving along quickly, and just excited to see where we end up for the summer season this year. But if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any other questions for Mr. McClure? Thank you, Mr. McClure. This time, we'll have a financial report by our city treasurer. Welcome, Kristin.
All right. All right, so tonight, I'm going to go over the February 2025 financial summary. The first page, and this is going to be just the same format as last time. The first slide goes over the bank about, our summary of bank balances, and I, these are summarized by fund. The bank balances didn't change much. It stays around the same generally overall. This month, we did earn about $85,000 in interest on our checking accounts. And that number might change every month, depending on, that's dependent on the prevailing market interest rate at the time. It's about 4.25% right now. This is a total city investment balance of our CDs by fund, and we've got about $13 million in the general fund, about $385,000 in the meter deposit fund, and about $5.5 million in the Yukon Reserve Funds. The total interest, we've got about accrued interest on the pool fund CDs and the general fund, about $158,000, and that is not reflected in these balances. So what happens is the interest is compounded daily and credited to the CDs either monthly or quarterly, depending on the CD term. And so, you know, we follow, we've been following the prudent investor rules, so the investments are made in the following order. A priority was safety, liquidity, and return on investment. So, you know, we've stacked these at different banks with different maturities. And this is just a visual representative, a representation of the CD balances by fund. This is the monthly sales tax collections for March. They were down a little bit this month, and that is generally the, what, what happens of the trend following February, because February is the December and January sales tax collections over Christmas, so they're going to be a little high. So naturally, in, the March collections are usually low, as you can see from the previous three years, they're down a little bit. So our year-to-date collections and the sale, in total sales tax collections, are about almost $21 million. We still have a year-to-date shortfall of about $875,000, and so we're down about 4.3% from last year. And that's actually, I was looking at the state treasurer's report, and they reported that their sales tax overall has a 3.2% decrease statewide over last year as well. And as I mentioned last time, the last slide was the total sales tax collections. So we get the total amount deposited, and then we split it up based on the ordinances, what the ordinance, how the ordinances explain to split the, the whole deposit up. So about half of that goes into general fund, and the rest of it is split up into restricted funds for debt service, or pest, or Yukon Reserve Fund, funding the rainy day fund. Next slide goes over use tax. The same thing, there was a, a big difference this month, and again, that follows the previous three years trends. So we're down this month on that. But we're still, well, total, total year-to-date collections are about 3.3 million. We still have a year-to-date increase of $250,000, so we're up about 8.25% from last year. And again, the state treasurer's reporting an, about an 8% increase overall from last year as well. And the same with the sales tax, that we get one deposit, and then we split that up over the three-fourths of it, so three cents goes into the general fund, and then one cent, so a quarter of it, goes into a restricted fund for capital improvements. So these are other, some kind of a fund of the other, sorry, a summary of the other taxes we get that go into the general fund, and mainly gas and tobacco taxes. You can see a difference, it goes from about $17,000, and then in February, it's $12,000, and March, it's about 11. And the reason that is, is our gas collections, so they, they've been withholding the gas taxes until we get our financials filed for the year. They withhold those, and then we get the, we'll probably get the balance by the end of the year. So we have, our final financial statement should be filed soon. Our HBC audit is almost complete, and then those should get filed, and we should receive all those gas taxes. This is a summary of the franchise fees. We're about 67% of the fiscal year. Everything's really in line, same as last month. The only difference is in the electrical franchise, there was an issue we, that's down just a little bit because we didn't receive the electrical franchise payment for this month. We checked with OGN, and they're just reissuing us a check. I think they were changing some things in their billing system. So we, that should, we should get that soon, and then that will show up, we'll be back in line with budget next month. As I said last month, the telephone franchise, we get that basically the whole amount in June, so I know that looks kind of low, but we, we should catch up with our budget then. But other than that, everything, revenue varies month to month on the franchise collections, and we're realistically in line with our projected budget. This next slide is a revenue summary by type. And so as I mentioned in the previous slides, the sales tax, the $2 million in sales tax is the whole amount, and so the amount that goes to the general fund in the current period is about 1.6 million. And so we're right in line with budget, 66% in sales tax. Franchise fees are a little bit down, and that's due to the, I believe, for the electrical franchise. Once we get that, that'll be back in line with budget. Licenses and permits are a little bit down. Those should come up. There's usually a pretty big increase in the spring when there's building, and we get more permits for building, electrical permits, plumbing permits, and things like that. But other than that, I think we're pretty much in line or a little bit ahead, once we get the, the franchise fees up with budget. Next is the general fund expense summary by department. Really, everything's pretty much in line as it is last month. The only things that are kind of stand out was legislative, and I explained last month, that's because we have some encumbrance on some consultant fees. But that's why legislative is high. And technology, their budget's front-loaded, so most of the expenses come out in the beginning of the year. So other than that, pretty much all the departments are in line with their budget or just a little bit under for the year so far. And this is just a graphical representation of where we are, and I think I had gotten with you about the November, you had asked last time about the November expenses, and that was due to, pretty much due to the three paychecks in, in that month, so.
Are we correcting that kind of trend in our budget for '25, '26 fiscal year? I know you guys have been knee-deep in those meetings.
Yeah.
I would hope that that's the kind of thing that we could get right, because we know, we know what the calendar is. We know how many, how many pay periods are in a month, you know, a year or two ahead of time.
Yes, yes, we're definitely looking at that for you. So the next is just a summary of the enterprise funds, the revenue and expenditures, water, sewer, sanitation, and stormwater. And the revenue, the current revenue and the year-to-date revenues are pretty much in line with what we projected for the fiscal year. And the expenditures are as well pretty much in line for what we projected. The only thing outstanding is stormwater, and I think I explained last time, that was due to some expense, payroll expenses. We were down a, a percent, so their employment costs have been decreased, so that's why they haven't had as many expenses and expenditures in stormwater. And here's the same kind of summary of the expenses and revenue of the enterprise funds. And the reason why this month, the expenses are abnormally high is, so December and January water usage fees were posted in February, so that makes up for about $563,000. We had a yearly payment on water, well, contractual agreements were paid in February, which accounted for about $166,000. And just a few other notable things, there was some increased fuel cost of $6,000, and we had a big truck rental in sanitation for about $12,000. So I, you know, I knew that you would probably ask me about the expenses, and so those are the, probably the big things that make up the reason why the expenses for this month are high. But those are just one-time expenses, we, for the, like, the water well contractual agreements, and then next month, the water usage fees should be posted correctly, and it should be more in line with, the expenses shouldn't be so much higher than the revenue on that next month. So, do you have any questions?
I'm really glad that you're in the role that you're in, Kristin, and you did a great job.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Last but not least, we'll have an update on the forensic audit report and the associated resolution update by city manager Mike Castro.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. What I want to do tonight is go through similar to what we did last month, and talk about the NAFA audit and our progress this month. We've made real good progress and hope to be able to demonstrate that this evening. So to lead out with just an overview of where we're at this month, initially, we are complete with the March 31 requirements. If you look through the forensic resolution, there are a lot of dates associated with a lot of those items, and there were five dates associated with March 31. So we either have those policies in place or have those tracking systems in place so we can successfully say this tonight, that we are complete with the March 31 requirements. Several other sections are nearing completion throughout the document. Mitch will give you a, a much more in-depth update. I'm just a warm-up for Mitchell, so the Citizen of the Year will come up here and give you that update shortly. Our focus across all departments, again, is policy development right now. One of the things that I will address with one of my later slides is some of the training that we're getting into, and that starts within a week on the Ethics Hotline. So Jason is heading that up, and that'll start shortly. Templates and categorizing standards. When you're doing 27 different policies, it, it is very important to have some standardization to these policies. You know, we, we envision presenting these to the workforce in categories, so it's important that they make sense, that we have the same theme, the same language, and Mitch has set up a real good program to ensure that that occurs, and that we have policies that 20 years from now will still look good. And again, our, as I've just alluded to, our long-term focus remains in place. Some milestones, we already talked about, Mike, March 31. We had some key departures, with the departure of our city clerk and the departure of our Human Resources Director. We had some key departures with the departure of our city clerk and the departure of our human resources director, and they were really midstream in terms of the policies that they were working on. We've been able to pick those up and go forward with those policies. So a bit of a hiccup, but nothing fatal. I think we're going to make good progress in those areas. We are coordinating with the state where appropriate, particularly on the estatement policy. And so that's a part of our process now, and we are also benchmarking other cities. Talk a little bit about reconciliation, that was one of the five areas for the March 31 deadline. Our pool cash is reconciled through November. All other accounts are reconciled through December. So we have a reconciliation process that is in place. I sat down with our finance, with our city treasurer and went through that process, and she showed me how she accomplishes this. So I now know much more about reconciliations than I had ever imagined that I would. But we have a good reconciliation process. That being said, we are a few months behind. You know, it's not catastrophic, and I know that Kristin is working. She's not entirely happy with being three or four months behind. So she is making progress on that, and she's given me some dates when we'll be up to speed. And I think next month, when I come before you, I'll be able to have some progress on this matter. And I'm going to turn it over to the assistant city manager, and he will give you an update on the specific status on individual policies. Mitch.
Alrighty, we'll get started here. As you can see, we have quite a few procedures and policies. We have 20 of them that's in this group that we're going to talk about tonight. First, you know, you can see in section one, internal controls and policies, we have a procedure for performing bank reconciliations. We have fist, sorry, fixed asset tracking, 500,000 in Morning and Code. We have a contract track, tracking software that we're in the process of uploading all the contracts in. Bank reconciliation and financial reporting in section two, we have a financial summary which was given tonight. We, this is our second time around, and we'll be keeping that up. Unclaimed property policy estatement, we have a policy there that we have. Section three, ordinance, qualification, and compliance, I know this is one that was discussed in depth. We do have an ordinance qualification procedure policy. We are currently tracking and updating with Excel all the ordinances and all the information associated with that. And in MUNICODE sends an email monthly on ordinance submittals that we submit to them. As we get towards the end, we'll talk about some software. We're looking at software and a lot of these that will be in our budget as we look going forward next year. Section four, we have budgeting and funding transfer policy. New financial director starts April 14, 2025, Brian Chris. He is one of the items that we talked about, we need to have in there. So we have a new financial director will be starting. When we get to section five, misuse of city assets and personnel, this is for non-contractual and non-union employees. Monitoring of city vehicle usage and tracking policy, we have that. City vehicle personnel use policy, this is for those that take vehicles home that are on-call or subject to call. So we do have a policy of how that is and how it's used. Section six, right now, use of pest funds, we're kind of trying to get some of these other ones caught up, and we'll work on that through this budgeting process. Section seven, procurement bidding practices, vendor management, and accounts payable. Vendor management using InCode, we're using the software a lot more and making sure all the information is up to date. We have those that are in business or out of business or still in compliance with what we're doing. Staff is currently working on updating contracts to be our fiscal year. So we're working on all the contracts that we have out there and working on that, getting that in line. Section eight, human resources and payroll irregularities. Code of Conduct and Ethics Policies, Conflict of Interest Policy. We have a cellular telephone and device policy, social media policy. And then, of course, with the resolution 2025-05, Yentor Consulting Services, he's fallen up on time and vacation, evaluating the sickly time accruals, payouts, identifying, analyzing, analyzing potential payout report errors, and enhancing policies and procedures. Okay, section nine, hotline ethics reporting. We have a nondiscrimination, anti-harassment policy and complaint procedure, ethics hotline reporting system and policy and procedure. Training will start April 8 for all general employees. Complaint and reporting system is working, and after that, everybody will have access to that multiple ways. There's a QR code, as well as they can fax it, they can email it, there's a lot of things that you can do. And we'll let you know as we go forward, all the access points they can have. Of course, governance and oversight, we have a governance policy and rules of procedures that we will be bringing to you for review. Section 11, the version of city funds, current city attorney is working with that on the YCSF. There's a lot going on. Section 12, IT governance and security, information technology change control policies, city of Yukon website terms of use, general artificial intelligence acceptable use policy, disposal of media policy, payment card industrial compliance, industry compliance policy, active director policy, computer and network security policy, website privacy policy, cybersecurity incident response policy. And continuing, implementation of an IT marketing login system is in progress. IT security audit is in progress. IT governance and oversight committee is working and reviewing IT policies and procedures. They are in their second meeting, and we'll start training around the 15th each month. Ongoing training will be emailed to those individuals that have access to computers and use computers. So there will be a training program on IT as we go forward. And then we're down to implementation and oversight, which, like I said, those items we'll be bringing to you to review. So we'll give this back to the manager.
Thank you, Mitchell.
Isn't this exciting stuff?
Yes.
Mayor, I think we have successfully put the audience to sleep. Coming attractions, June is a big month. We've got about 15 items in June, we had five this month. And we have one in April, and then we have another 15 in June. So we have internal control coming up in April, and then June, the end of June, is a smorgasbord of policies and procedures. The one thing, Mitchell came up here and gave you kind of the rundown on all the policies. So I hope you gain an appreciation for just how much work has been put into that. And wherever you're at with about 95% of those policies, we are at that final stage. It's 95% done, and now it needs to come before the city manager so I can review it and make sure comments are in the right places, that it looks and feels the same, ask questions about word usage, all of that sort of stuff. So we're very, very close to finishing out on everything, literally, that Mitchell has mentioned. Again, June is a big month, internal controls next month. And what we may be doing from this point forward, so you don't have to suffer through that kind of a laundry list again, is just report by exception going forward. So in summary, this is sausage-making. There's a lot that goes into this, and these policies fly around, and they get several reviews. We are substantially far, we didn't really go too deep into this tonight, but we are substantially far into the ethics training and ethics hotline. I feel very comfortable with what we are doing there. And again, my final comment here, we are on task.
That's excellent, Mike. Do you, obviously, these policies will become living documents of sorts and have, you know, version controls associated with them. How do you all plan to manage them? Is there a central repository? How do you guys approach that?
So we have discussed that, we don't have an answer this evening, but that is a hot topic for us in terms of not just how we manage the controls and the versions, but also how we group them for training for staff.
Yep.
And, you know, how we review these in the years to come. We're setting up for the long haul, as I've alluded to time again and again. And we need to put in place a system that somebody can come behind in five years, read it, know what's going on, understand it, and continue the process, so that's the goal.
There's nothing worse than a stale policy.
Yeah, absolutely agree with you, Mayor.
Great work, Mike, and great, great work, Mitchell and the whole team. I really, the seriousness and the urgency that you all have worked through this is impressive.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Now move on to item three. Consider a motion to approve or reject the contract with Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC for on-call, on-call water and sewer project in the amount of $1,676,508. An acceptance of the bonds is recommended by the city engineer. A move that we reject the bid for on-call water and sewer project and direct the city manager to work with internal and external resources as needed within the city manager's authority to develop a revised bid specification for the city of Yukon on-call water sewer contract to be completed by May 1, approved hopefully in the May 6 council meeting, and advertised in trade publications and newspapers in the weeks of May 12 and May 19 if approved, with a pre-bid meeting to be held the week of May 26 with an expanded list of bidders. And the bids to be received, the city, by the city by June 15, opened and recommended for bid awards to city council on June 26 in advance of the new fiscal year. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Last time when we put this out for bid, we only got one response, correct?
That's correct.
What makes us think we're going to get more than that?
I think the, the, based on my review and also discussion with some folks within the industry, in particular, the Oklahoma Municipal Contractors Association, I believe that if we rework the bid spec and we advertise it more broadly, that we could see some additional bids.
Also, is this ARPA money? It's not ARPA money?
No, this is not ARPA money.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Moving on to item number four, now consider a motion to approve the contract extension with Brewer Construction LLC until July the 2nd, 2025, for the 2023 water and sewer project. Do I hear a motion? Seeing no motion, this item dies. Now we'll consider approving budget amendment number 2025-04 to transfer police pest funds to capital for the purchase of a 2025 Chevy Silverado from Carter Chevrolet in the amount of $54,152. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief, you want to tell us what we're going to use this for?
Major Lemmings, please.
Or Major, sorry.
Sorry, yeah.
Chief is...
Major Lemmings has the, the Observation Tower, or what are we called, what are we calling it?
Yeah, Chief got out of this one.
I'm sure you got it all.
We've had the ability in the past to move equipment that we've had around, and we just lost that ability with the old vehicle that we had that we no longer have. So the sky tower, the light fixtures that go on the intersections for the Christmas lights, and equipment that we can't fit in police cars when we go and set up these areas for the events that the city hosts.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Major Lemmings. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Now we'll consider a motion to approve the purchase of 2025 Chevy one-ton pickup for the police department to be purchased from Oklahoma State Contract SW 0035, utilizing pest funds in the amount of $54,152, as recommended by the police chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Is this to replace one, or we're just getting another one?
We currently don't have one. This is the same, the first one was the budget amendment, and the second one is approving the purchase from the state contract. Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
On to item number seven, now we'll consider a motion to approve the purchase of a 50 by 20 by 10 suspended cantilever from Superior Recreational Products using buyboard contract 679-22 for Kimball Bay Pool to provide shade for pool patrons as part of the $235,000 budget for the Kimball Bay Pool Renovations Capital Project in the amount of $58,912.52, as recommended by the Parks and Rec Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. Now we'll have a discussion and possible action to approve the request from RISNAGME NAFA Engineering for a simplified planned unit development located at 1225 Vanhaman Avenue, as recommended by the Planning Discuss, Planning Commission. I will now open the discussion.
I watched the Planning Commission for this, and I couldn't tell. At one point, they were against commercial, the next point, they were against residential, then we were back to against commercial. I hate giving up commercial land. We have so little of it, and so I am not for it. I never could figure out what the people were wanting because they kept going back and forth. But I don't like to see us give up. We have so little commercial land. Can they speak now?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Madam Councilwoman.
Good evening, running my clerk, I live at 1006 Rancho Court. My house is backed up to that property. I've lived there for almost 30 years. I've known that it's commercial, I don't have been a problem with commercial. I have a problem with you guys trying to change it to residential. They're putting 30 units in, they're going to be two-story units, and all that there is going to be bedrooms, and they have windows by, by code. So they're all going to be looking at our backyards, see everything we got going on. It's just not a good, good mix of both, but that is a real tiny space anyway. Well, have all the traffic in and out, you know, it's going to be, with it being townhomes, there's people in and out all the time, it's never the same residents that come and go. You're going to get, you know, you're asking for trouble putting that in there. And they're talking about just putting trees and leaving a stockade fence. If you guys do agree to this, I would like to see a brick or stone wall around this separate residential from that commercial. I just, I really hope you guys will consider not approving this for the residential side of it. It's, if it's in your backyard, you would not like it either. You know, it, the six-foot fence, not a lot of privacy, but it is some privacy. You have two-story structure right behind your property, I mean, eyes wide on you. So please, please consider not to change that to residential.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sharon O'Brien, I'm at 1210 Dorchester Court, and most of my backyard is on the side. When you put a two-story complex there, they're going to be right in my backyard. And I'm just like him, by putting trees and just a stockade fence, that's not going to cut it. I'm not going to have any privacy whatsoever. When I moved in there in 1980, none of this was around there. And I'm fine with what's there now, but to put something in that small of an area, and there were some people at the Planning Commission that was neighbors on the district streets, that they've been having sewer issues, and we was told that they would definitely be checking into that. Now, whether that's been done, I don't know. But I'm just very much not in favor of this being in my, right in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Erica Swan, and I live at 904 Garden Grove. And my husband and I moved out to Yukon in 2001, and we've seen a lot of development in the area. It's been good development, and I'm excited to see Yukon moving forward. The reality is, that lot is going to get developed sooner rather than later. I'm for the commercial aspect of it, I feel like we ought to be getting as many tax dollars as we possibly can. I think it's a great location, current setup is kind of awkward. But we need more services, we need more stores to provide what we need. I mean, we lost SmartSaver, now Ollies is there, but hey, you know, that does impact us. CVS is gone, not our fault. And for the same reasons that neighbors have mentioned, I have concern about the residential aspect of it. We all are personally and permanently invested in Yukon. I love Yukon, I love Rancho South, we love living there for the quietude and the privacy. And we know that things aren't going to be perfect for us if we develop this commercially, but we love what we've worked hard for. We know that we don't have the biggest homes or the fanciest homes, but we just expect the same things other people expect in their own homes. So I think this is an intriguing concept, but I just don't think it's the right concept for that lot in that neighborhood. Sorry, my allergies are acting up, so. So we're just asking a reconsideration of the design of this, so not to pass it as it currently stands. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Seaton from 905 Lancaster Drive here in Yukon. And I don't live right by the fences like the other folks do. I live on the opposite side of the neighborhood, and my concern is over the traffic. You already have a lot of traffic, that is a difficult shopping center area to get into as it is. The other thing my consideration is for, 30... The other thing my consideration is for, thirty units, possibly thirty families. Our schools are already overcrowded. I realize a lot of that is coming in from Oklahoma City, but our schools are still getting the influx from the other apartments and stuff being built up. I would hope that the city would consider improving the school system and stuff so it could handle more families before we start building more apartments.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Is there any other discussion or anyone else that would like to make a comment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Keith Streeter, we're the developer.
Uh, Keith, could you list your, uh, street address for me, please?
Uh, ninety-six-oh-one Southwest Ninety-third Mustang.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. There's twenty-four units instead of thirty, which is not a big thing, but, um, as far as the two-story, if we decide to go commercial, we can still ask for a two or a three-story. In residential, I think y'all's maximum is two, uh, as far as level. But in commercial, I think we can go three in a commercial development. So every development is going to have the same problem, fencing, you know, that just, uh, and traffic. Those are the two things that, no matter what goes in there, it's gonna increase those things. So that's just something that happens when you have a city that grows. Things are gonna get busier. And so, you know, the things that they're, they're talking about are going to happen whether it is commercial or residential. I mean, um, and like I said, traffic, it doesn't matter. Whatever goes in, there's gonna be a bunch of cars added to that area. And, um, so with that being said, we would ask that y'all would, um, look at approving it.
Thank you so much, sir.
You bet, thank you.
Mitchell, you're a man that has his hand in all things. You wanna come talk?
This is actually Danielle's project, but I, if you'd rather talk to her, but if you want.
I like to talk to Danielle. Here's your call.
Let's talk to Danielle.
Okay.
You get the mic all the time, Mitchell.
Okay.
Citizen of the year.
Yeah, give that citizen of the year a break, right?
It's a tough job.
It is, it is. So what is the question that we're?
Tell us what we need to know, tell us what you know.
So the Planning Commission did recommend approval, um, and we did talk with Arnold and had his crew go out and look at the sewer line. There is no issues with the sewer line, so that is, that is good news on that. They did increase the landscaping to ten percent with the trees at fifteen-foot centers, and eight percent of that will be along that residential edge that kind of makes that wing shape, uh, there. They will be looking at, uh, they did create a perpetual maintenance agreement, which is in your packets as well. Those are the main things that the Planning Commission, uh, requested ahead of time before the council meeting, and those have been completed. As far as the windows, uh, the developer wanted to have basically where the bedrooms would be facing the residential area, and per building code and fire code, you have to have a window in the bedroom. So, um, just a little bit about that, but if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And I think it was a four-on-one vote. I think that guy was the one who said, keep it commercial.
Correct, yes.
Just kinda like me, I hate giving up tax dollars.
Yep.
Thank you so much, Danielle.
You're welcome.
I move that we postpone this matter until later time, specifically until the April fifteenth council meeting, so that Councilmember Zimmerman, uh, is able to opine and consider this matter since it is his, uh, his ward.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Seeing that we postponed item number eight until later time, I similarly move on this next item, item nine, which is, uh, discussion and possible action to approve the request by Riz Najmi Nafa Engineering for a preliminary plat located at twelve-twenty-five Vanhaman Avenue. It's recommended by Planning Commission. I similarly move that we postpone this matter until a later time, specifically the April fifteenth council meeting for the same reasons I stated previously. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Ms., Madam Clerk? Oh, sorry, sir. I didn't see ya.
Um, you guys are planning on moving this to the fifteenth? Is it gonna be the same time that the amphitheater is gonna happen? Because in our neighborhood group, Facebook group, they're saying that they don't wanna come because they knew they weren't gonna get in or speak because, you know, the concern for the amphitheater, and we don't wanna have to.
Yes, sir, I, I have no control of, of, uh.
Well, I understand the people, but is it?
Which people come?
Is that gonna be on the agenda?
Um, it, these two items, what we've, one of them we've just passed, and the other one is, is now going to be voted on, are being moved to the April fifteenth meeting. Councilmember Zimmerman was, is on a track meet up in Ponca City. It's his ward. We try to run a very inclusive council and ensure that every council member is able, especially in their own neck of the woods, able to weigh in, so, uh, I, I don't know what else to tell you besides that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action to approve phase four for, of the citywide street panel replacement program in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to be paid to Schwartz Paving using the on-call concrete and asphalt paving and storm sewer contract. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
So this money is coming out of what was set aside for the Yukon Parkway Vanhaman intersection? Because I, what I've understood from talking to them is that it's not gonna be able to be completed. Can we not carry that over so that we're guaranteed we get that intersection done? Because what if we don't have that money? I, I, you know, Rodney's not here. That's his intersection that he's worked so hard to get completed.
Yeah, that, that will be incorporated into the budget, so we'll have that as one of the projects that we'll vote on as a part of the budget. That's the plan right now.
So it may not get passed?
It is dependent on council staff, does not have a.
I personally fully support the improvements to that intersection. Any other council members wanna weigh in on their support for improvements there?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
We didn't say that, but if the money's not there.
Well, we, we have.
You've got lots of chickens, I know.
Yeah, we got chickens.
There it is.
I started to bring you one of those wind-up chickens tonight.
My daughter told me that they're incubating chickens at, uh, Cameron Fitts's Central or Independence.
Sorry, it's a standing joke.
Okay.
I'm hungry for chicken now.
Any other, any other discussion on this item around the, this is phase four, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the next phase of street panels? I'm, you know what I'm really pleased about when Kristen gave us a budget update? What I'm really pleased about is that we've done three phases, substantially done with the, the third phase now, and, uh, we haven't gone out to taxpayers and said, hey, we need a bond to fix your concrete streets, that are all in these neighborhoods and are thirty, forty, fifty years old. And, uh, and it's amazing, like, there's, you know, two, three spots in every neighborhood that were really bad, and they've been fixed. And, uh, I, I'm really happy about that. Right, seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Cause, at this time, we'll consider approving resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-six, a resolution of the city council, the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, authorizing the solicitation of bids for the design, purchase, and installation of three Route sixty-six signs to be completed in advance of the Route sixty-six centennial year, directing the preparation of a budget amendment to fund the project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
How much are these signs gonna cost?
That's what we're looking to find out.
So we're just authorizing that we're looking into it, or we?
That's right, we're, we're gonna go out to bid. We're gonna go out to bid.
Cause didn't we have somebody come and bring signs?
We did, yeah. So we would definitely send the bid to those folks as well as other local sign manufacturer, manufacturer and installers.
You know, I am all about Route sixty-six, and I'm all about Main Street, but making a budget amendment, again, we have two librarians that have still not been filled. We're in a hiring freeze, our tax dollars are down. Shouldn't be in a hiring freeze for those two positions because they were budgeted in. Just saying. Again, I know we're counting chickens.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action to direct the city manager to engage a qualified firm to develop a comprehensive Parks Master Plan to begin in early fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six with an emphasis on playgrounds, aquatics, open space, indoor and outdoor facilities, multi-use needs, and long-term system planning as recommended by the mayor. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? On this item, this is, um, essentially directing the city manager to get ready to do this work in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. You might say, why would we say that right now? Why don't we just wait until June thirtieth or the, I forget which, is it July first? We have a meeting this year? Why don't we just wait till the first July meeting and do it? I think there's a lot of work that sometimes doesn't occur or doesn't get started until, say, August, September. We pass the budget in, we work on the budget in May, we pass the budget in June, it goes into effect July one. And then, and then there's this internal staff has, they have regular stuff that's going on, and then they get into, hey, here's what we've been directed to do, and so sometimes it gets a little delayed. I care so much about our parks and our, and this master plan, we have a lot of great parks, nine parks in Yukon, with a lot of facilities, some of which are aged, some of which we're doing some work on. But it's good to get a full view of this, some other communities that have done this, such as War Acres has done a master plan of their parks. It helps direct, what do we have, what needs repaired, what needs renovated, uh, what needs replaced? What, what do citizens want out of their parks? So this is directing city manager to, uh, begin that exploration, but the, the heart of the work will occur in the next fiscal year. And we'll have to put that in the next fiscal year's budget. Any other questions about that idea? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action to authorize development of specifications and preparation for bidding phase one of a system-wide playground equipment replacement plan fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, not to exceed fifty-thousand dollars per playground for installation in eight Yukon parks. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So again, we're not spending the money.
We're not spending the money this year, we're getting ready, we're directing city manager, um, and his staff to begin the preparation for this. Ryan did an amazing job, and his team did an amazing job on Hillcrest Playground, getting a lot done with very few dollars. It's, 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 it's kind of interesting because the park's kind of separated a little bit by Cornwell, but Vice Mayor and the council have put together a plan for sidewalks there, so it's becoming more walkable in that neighborhood. And so we want, we would like to see similar kinds of things happening across the other eight parks besides Hillcrest. Seeing no more, oh, sorry. Any other comment? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll cons, I'm gonna read, uh, all four of these executive sessions, and then we will, uh, the ones that are passed will enter into executive session.
Could you bring me fifteen to fourteen, um, so that I don't have to go in and out and then?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, we'll consider convening into executive session pursuant to Oklahoma statutes Title twenty-five, Section three oh-seven B four for confidential communications with the city attorney concerning pending investigation into the accessory building at nine-oh-eight Travertine Circle, Yukon, Oklahoma, more specifically described as Lot thirty-three in the south, forty-five feet of Lot thirty-four of Block one in Stone Creek addition to the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, and taking appropriate action in open session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider convening into an executive session pursuant to Oklahoma statutes twenty-five, Section three oh-seven B four for confidential communications with the city attorney concerning pending investigation into city of Yukon funds held by the commu, Yukon Community Support Foundation, and taking appropriate action in open session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
I recuse myself because of conflict of interest.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider convening into executive session pursuant to Oklahoma statutes Title twenty-five, Section three oh-seven B four for confidential communications with the city attorney concerning the case styled Amanda Humble et al. versus city of Yukon case number CJ twenty-twenty-four dash four-five-seven, taking appropriate action in open session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider convening into executive session pursuant to Oklahoma statutes Title twenty-five, Section three oh-seven B three for confidential communications to discuss purchasing or appraisal of potential parcels and to take appropriate action in open session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll convene into executive session, and we will take up item, uh,
Fifteen?
Fourteen, sixteen, and seventeen. And, and at the end, we'll take up item fifteen.
Okay, then I'll come back down.
Uh, coming back to executive session, uh, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, and, um, Mitchell will probably call for you in a bit. At this time, we'll consider reconvening from executive session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Well, now I'll read the minutes from the executive session. During the executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no action was taken, no votes were cast. At this time, we'll consider a motion, um, for possible action resulting from the executive session. I make a motion to authorize the expenditure of up to twenty-five thousand dollars for one-half of the actual cost of remediating the structure height with such remediation to include the remover of the dormer and the window on the property at nine-oh-eight Travertine Circle, Yukon, Oklahoma, more specifically described Lot thirty-three in the south, forty-five feet of Lot thirty-four of Block one in Stone Creek addition to the city of Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I hear a motion, uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll take up item H from the consent docket, which is being heard in regular order. regular order. We'll consider a motion for Budget Amendment 2025-03, amount not to exceed $60,000 to fund the venue feasibility study. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
As always, if we have $60,000, that's enough to fully staff the library for our summer reading program. Guys, if we have money, then we should not have open positions available. Our library is important, our summer reading program is coming up, and we have that all funded already, but if we have $60,000 extra dollars, that's where that money should go first, and I will say that every time.
Mr. Spicer? Mr. Spicer?
Good evening, Preston Spicer, 13500 West Wilshire Boulevard, and we also own the property at 419 West Main Street. Kind of seconding what Ms. Selby just said, um, so we, we heard tonight, sales tax, sales tax revenue is down 4% compared to the same period last year. We're currently in a hiring freeze, we've had multiple months, um, with decreasing tax revenue, and we're looking at, again, amending the budget, um, for $60,000. We also just completed the forensic audit that we heard about tonight, and it looks like in that status update from Section 7, um, it was the procurement and bidding process. I have just a few questions regarding that. Did we bid this out to figure out how much it was gonna cost? No?
I'm not sure, uh, Mr. Spicer.
Sorry, I'm, pardon me. Let me back up. So in reference to the feasibility study, have we bid this out to, to any firms?
We haven't placed a bid yet, we're authorizing the expenditure to the city manager.
Understand. Um, but if you're, not to exceed budget, um, tends to be a breeding ground for overspending. Um, I understand that $60,000, um, it's not a huge chunk of change, but it is a huge chunk, chunk of change of taxpayer money. Um, so just a few other follow-up questions, have we looked into who's gonna conduct the study?
This, we're authorizing the city manager to do that, not the city council.
I, I understand that.
Yep.
Mr. Castro, do you have any comments?
Mayor, I'll make the comment to you. We have looked at, at firms and have made phone calls, and bear in mind that, that this is a professional service, so it is not bid, per se.
So I think just broadly and generally, like the council, we, we meet every couple weeks. When we met on March the 4th, we authorized the city manager to explore this and to come back to us with what it costs. We're not managing or micromanaging the city manager and his staff in these things, we're a legislative body and a body that makes appropriations, um, for these things. This kind of professional service, the city manager has the capability to engage these folks within the budget and to, uh, conduct those kind of reviews for the, uh, proper risk management, proper operations of the city. And we don't, we don't control day-to-day what the city manager and his staff are doing.
Absolutely, I understand that. Um, but, you know, in project management, a good, a good, uh, kind of standard process is to understand what it's gonna cost beforehand. I, I didn't see anything in the agenda items, I could have overlooked them. Was there anything in there that discussed, um, discussed those, not necessarily bids, because, because you said it wasn't bids, but you can actually bid out professional services? I've done it myself. Um, so I'm curious if that's gonna be put into the policy in Section 7 of the procurement and bidding, um, but can I ask why it wasn't, why, why we don't bid out professional services?
I would think actually the attorney would be able to respond to that more so than I am.
Well, and probably more importantly, that agenda item that's before you is this, is this item, not the general expenditure of professional services.
So I understand, I understand that respectfully, but it also, I mean, it all kind of ties together, because typically when you're looking at a project, you wanna understand what it costs before you get started on it.
The Competitive Bidding Act requires competitive bidding for public works projects, but our, our code and our ordinances and our charter allow the city manager to handle procurement of professional services.
Um, can you touch on what parts of the project this study is actually gonna cover? Or?
Again, Mayor, if you...
Yeah, I think it's broad, you know, I would just, it's a broad umbrella of feasibility. There's a lot of pieces of analysis that we are not experts in. In fact, that's actually why we've engaged this outside firm to do this, is within a city of our size, some cities have people on their staff that have these skills. We, as a city of our size, we do not have, uh, a full-time person or even a part-time person that has that expertise, and so we rely on outside services to do that. We do that with our city engineers, some cities have city engineers that are on staff. Um, we do that with, uh, our accounting firm, um, with some extra help from Crawford and Associates. We do that with a lot of different professional services, because that's what you have to do with a city of our size, to get the best skills and ability without having a fixed, uh, a fixed cost associated with having that headcount on staff.
Um, so I guess I'd follow that up, uh, with, I just think in terms of, you know, currently we're in, like I said, we're in a hiring freeze, sales taxes down, we wanna spend another $60,000. There's a whole room of people here tonight, um, some that were outside as well, that, um, I don't think really want this to, to happen, and we wanna take a, I personally wanna take a deep look at this, look at other alternatives, um, specifically to venue, I don't feel like that's been completed. Um, I don't feel like that, uh, that part of the process, Mr. Shriver, you mentioned in your email to me today, due diligence. I think part of due diligence is figuring out what the community wants, um, what the community needs, I think that step's been skipped. I think we need to push, push the pause button on this, um, and take a few steps back, slow down a little bit on venue itself and the feasibility study. I 100% agree that feasibility study is much needed, uh, and is gonna provide a lot of useful information, but I, I think it needs to be directed to the correct project, not something that's going to be detrimental to a lot of people's lives and be disruptive to a lot of people's lives. So I think for the time being, I'll leave it at that, and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer.
Good evening, I'm Amy McAllister, I live at 14175 West Highway 66. Um, thank you for lending us all come and visit with you tonight about this. Um, it's, it's safe to say since the last council meeting that probably none of us attended, uh, I feel like our world has been turned upside down by the decisions made at that meeting. Uh, we've had an opportunity to visit, uh, Mr. Shriver's met with us, uh, Mayor Pillmore, I've visited with you, and we've emailed quite a bit, and I feel like you have both been open to ideas, and I appreciate that. So over the last month, I've met a lot of our neighbors in Frisco Ridge, Westport 66, the original Westport and Stone Creek. And the one thing that I have walked away from that, from tho, developing those relationships is, all of those people, everyone cares and loves this community as much as I do. And so, uh, we're a large number of people, a large number of your constituents, and I really hope that through this process, we can have a healthy dialogue where you can listen to our concerns and take that into account. Um, kind of following up on the first gentleman's, um, conversation, the thing that's kind of bothered me about this whole thing is why would we spend money on a survey looking at the farthest southwest 20 acres of that commercial property? You know, I, I've been trying to think, it's like, how can I come up with an analogy for this? To me, that would be like finding my dream piece of property, building my dream master bathroom, and then deciding, oh, I need to design and build the rest of my house. It's like, how can you isolate just a tiny little piece of land and work on that, but not consider everything else? Uh, so rather than spending our money, our taxpayer money on a feasibility study, I really think we need to focus on developing a relationship with an economic development consultant or a team, someone who can look at the entire 184 acres, and we also have the commercial land on the east side of Frisco that's been sitting there vacant. So it's not very often that we have a blank canvas like this to work with. And I think it's very short-sighted to look at 20 acres in the southwest corner of the farthest most point from any road close by. So in an email to you all Sunday night, you should have got, everyone got it, 10:30-ish or so Sunday night, I was just daydreaming about what could we use that for? I see a Utah, a Yukon town square, made, Mayor Pillmore and I have gone back and forth on this a lot. You know, if we had a hotel anchoring one corner, it would help visitors, guests coming in, but it could also help our citizens, meeting rooms, event spaces. Um, we have people in this town that own hotels, that are specialists in this area. We could engage them, help our, our citizens. Maybe another corner could have a Trader Joe's, a Whole Foods, a Costco. How many of you have driven into town, into Oklahoma City, to go to those places? We all have. For an entertainment hub, instead of focusing on something that is going to be so disruptive to those of us west of Garth Brooks, look at something like a Hayday, look at something that could cover all ages, from the youngest to the oldest. Um, you know, think about, we've talked a lot about a golf course, Tiger Woods Pop Stroke would be a fantastic addition, and oh, by the way, they're building one by Chicken and Pickle over on Britton and Broadway Extension. Okay? Um, a central park, having an outdoor venue area where we could have weddings, family reunions, Christmas in the park. We desperately need green space, I mentioned Chicken and Pickle, that would be so fantastic. So there are, there's so much that we could do with this area that would be family-friendly, it would serve as, serve citizens as well as out-of-town guests. Um, a, and I think all of those items that I mentioned all exist in the metroplex area, but they're 15 to 20 miles east, and we've all gone there, I know we have. So why not build something like that on the west side of Yukon? So in general, um, I would really, really love to see you organize a community task force, ask for volunteers, I volunteer, I would be on it, and I guarantee you, you would have a lot of people who would give their, their contributions and thoughts to what would be something that would draw people into a town square area. So we are all neighbors, Yukon is little, we know each other, we live with each other, our kids go to school together. As elected officials, we probably voted for you to be on city council. So all I ask is please, listen to us, listen to what we have to say. Um, we just wanna come up with a solution that doesn't negatively impact our daily lives. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. McAllister.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Don Bryson, I'm at 10305 Aberdeen Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. I've been a homeowner for 20 years in Yukon. I'm against the amphitheater in close proximity to residential areas. I promise, the feasibility study, item H is in here. My ma, my, yeah. My concerns are many, noise, perspective, amphitheater owners have asked to be able to emit sound levels higher than is allowed by city ordinance. This is unacceptable. Traffic would increase in this area and in the surrounding neighborhoods, increasing the potential for more accidents and auto theft. This is unacceptable. Economic impact, one day I may decide to sell my home. Due to the negativity brought to the area by the amphitheater, my home may sell for less than fair, fair market value if it sells at all. This is unacceptable. A $60,000 feasibility study was proposed while the City of Yukon is in a hiring freeze. The fact that the city can't afford to fund additional employees, yet will expend $60,000, reminds us of the parents that can't afford groceries, but they go to the casino hoping to hit it big. And, uh, that's irresponsible and unacceptable. Crime, it is the fact that the criminal activity will increase in the area, as it has in all the other areas where these amphitheaters have risen. This is unacceptable. The city itself, the county itself, does not have enough law enforcement to maintain peace in the area. In closing, I'd like to remind those here that we have an obligation to our neighbors to defend our rights for peace and quiet. We have several veterans who suffer from PTSD, as well as children who are autistic. This level of noise pollution is especially for them unacceptable. Please vote down the feasibility study, and if not, the building request and all expenditures related to it. It is unacceptable.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Williams, and I have met with Mayor Fillmore in my house. Um, I am Keller Williams' top independent agent in the state of Oklahoma for real estate.
Ma'am, can you give me your address, please?
Yeah, 695 Kings Gate Road, Yukon. So I do live in Westport West. Um, anyway, I'm the top real estate agent for the state, for Keller Williams, I am the top independent agent for the City of Yukon. Um, I've been in real estate 33 years. I've been around long enough that I was here when Albertsons came in behind Parkland One, and Parkland One all acted like goofy people screaming and yelling. I went door to door back then to clients, and I explained to them when they asked me to sell their houses, please don't do this, this is not gonna hurt your property value. You're gonna love having a grocery store right around the corner, it's not gonna cost sound, it's not gonna cost smell, and there won't be much traffic, and it's gonna help Yukon to have that. I was right about that, but I went on for years after that grocery store was built to monitor the comps in Parkland One, to make sure that I did not give unwise advice to my clients. I didn't, the comp stayed up, Parkland One did great. Matter of fact, West Olympic backed up to that grocery store, and it actually sold for more per square foot than anything in the neighborhood for years. That got me ready for my next deal, so Walmart came in behind Rosewood on Main Street, I helped develop Rosewood, I, my husband built most of the houses in there, and, and Walmart wanted to put that little grocery store in there, and they all threw a fit and started acting like crazy people again. And I went door to door, and I met with all of them. And I could have been very wealthy had I not been so honest, but Walmart was not gonna hurt these people, and I told them all that. I talked all of them into staying, but one, one wanted to sell his house, I sold it and he left. So then we, we kind of went into the Stone Mill thing. Stone Mill gets developed from the north to the south, and the first three streets get done, the houses get built, the land behind that gets sold to the Yukon High School. I start getting calls. That hurt their property value. Noise, traffic. Those two back streets in Stone Mill, they have struggled ever since the high school went in. You can hear the football games from inside those people's living room, you hear the band doing their thing at 6 o'clock in the morning when they practice on the field. That hurt those people's property value. The traffic outside of Stone Mill during school sessions is so bad that people can't get in and out of their neighborhood. During Christmas, we put up in this town, and I've been, I'm from here, and I love all of you, I love my town, but we have put up with Christmas lights for years. I love the Christmas lights, traffic sucks. But it's for one month, we can live through it, right? So now, fast forward to this conversation. My phone started ringing a few weeks ago from every client I had that lived in Frisco Ridge, Westport West, Westport 66, and people that lived beyond that. I have to go to their houses and I have to tell them the truth, and I'm telling you the truth, this will hurt their property values. And most of these people in Frisco Ridge are young families, they barely put a minimum amount down, they can't sell their house to get out, and they do have to disclose this from this point forward since it's being talked about in the newspaper. So this will hurt these families. In these neighborhoods, they could, they could lose up to $20,000 equity, they'll be stuck there. Some of these people have autistic children that are sound sensitive. Some of these people have husbands or spouses that have, um, post-traumatic stress disorder, sound sensitive, and we're literally trapping these people where it's gonna be hard for them to get out of their house. So this is my heart, I want Yukon to be the best it can be, and I thank all of you all for your service. But do we trash out three neighborhoods of people, and, and I want... And I want you to know, for myself, I don't care. I don't own anything on my house. I can go anywhere I want to at any time. But these other people, they cannot do that. And I want to honor the people all over Yukon. And so, I'm just bringing you information tonight for you to understand. If you all can do that to three neighborhoods, I'm going to let you, I can't do anything about that. But I would not want to hurt those neighbors. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
My name is Isabel Rivera, and I live in 505 Winding Creek Road, Westport 66. And this is what I have to say. I go to sleep at eight o'clock, and I don't want to be hearing noises from outside my window and being awake at ten o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera.
Hi. My name is Susan Heggie. I live at 720 Chateau Avenue. That's bordered by Garth Brooks and Frisco and Vandement. I've lived there for thirty years. When I hear amphitheater, I see Russell Crowe and Gladiator. I see the Roman Coliseum. The Red Rock Amphitheater in Colorado is an amphitheater. Venue's Sunset Amphitheater in Colorado Springs is not. It is an open-air arena with slope seating. And because it is designed that way, the problems that have been talked about here tonight are exacerbated. The sound does not go in, the sound goes out. I question why Yukon would choose this problematic option as a source of tax revenue. The data from Venue's McKinney, Texas, and Broken Arrow locations reveal that these facilities were financed through a public-private partnership between Venue and the cities of McKinney and Broken Arrow. If you look at Venue's New York Stock Exchange perspective, it shows that forty percent of its financing comes from, quote, "municipal partners" in the form of real estate, tax incentives, and cash. So, my question is, is this how we would want our revenue source financed? Do we want to pay for forty percent of the cost of a publicly traded business's property investment? I mean, we're talking about $60,000 being an issue, but we're looking at a venue, at Venue, who proposes that a municipality finance forty percent of anything they bring into the city. The Colorado Springs location is the only one that's been completed. The one in McKinney is under construction, and I think the one in Broken Arrow is under construction. The Colorado Springs estimate went from forty million dollars to fifty-five million dollars to a final cost of ninety million dollars, and it provided seats for eight thousand people. I don't know how much this would cost, but I have no interest in financing to the tune of forty percent with our taxpayers' money, a project that is going to make somebody else money. I'm just not interested in it. I don't know where this money's going to come from. When a property is built, who owns it? Does Venue own it? Does the city own it? Who's responsible for its upkeep, its maintenance, the transportation, the traffic control? Who's responsible for all of those things? And how much cash are we actually talking about, and where is it going to come from? While it's being built, do the citizens of Yukon have to pay for infrastructure that needs to be upgraded to provide for ingress and egress to these properties? You know, Mr. Mudd said, "This is a great location." I'm sure it is. Mr. Mudd has obviously never been on Garth Brooks Boulevard between three and five, or from five to seven, on any given day of the week, or on a weekend, trying to get anywhere. And you know what? This city has done a phenomenal job of trying repeatedly to resolve our traffic issues on Garth Brooks and the rest of the city, and we just struggle to do it. I know that there are projects in the works right now that are meant to do it. I do not believe, by any stretch of the imagination, that 12,500 people will get in and out of that facility forty minutes on either side. And even if they do, let's add the three hours of the rest of the traffic that's there, and everybody just sits. Those are just minor things that I think of when I think of this situation. The claim is that the arena will bring jobs and boost tax revenue. In the meantime, what is going to be the cost to the rest of the citizens of this city? And I'm like everyone else here. You know, I'm not from here. I'm from southern Louisiana, so we know all about bad roads and bad infrastructure. But I've lived here for many, many years, and this is a great place for people to live. And you know what? We're not Colorado Springs. And we're not Dallas. We're not those people. We're a small town, and that's what I think people like about us. And finally, this is such a lucrative venture, why would we have to pay anything for anybody to come in and make a ton of money off of it? They should bring their own money in and make a ton of money off of it, and we all win. As for noise, I could find nothing indicating which way this arena might face, but I'm just telling you, I'm kind of operating in a vacuum there. Regardless, noise is going to be an issue. It's going to be a problem. The Colorado Springs Sunset Venue Calendar shows three events, an event every three days from May through September. Every three days, you've got 12,500 people coming in and out. The Oklahoma City Amphitheater shows the same thing. They show three events, about three events, an event every three days from May through September, because we know nobody's sitting outside in December, and nobody's sitting outside in February. During its opening, the Colorado location generated over 600 noise complaints. Yukon's current noise ordinance is vague and contains no specific limitations. So, is that ordinance going to be modified to protect those who live near the proposed venue, or is there going to be a, quote, "noise hardship permit," like they did in Colorado Springs, allowing for sounds to be louder than they should be at a certain time? Venue has indicated that the upgraded noise controls that have been added to the Colorado Springs Venue will not be added to future designs. So, they know there's a problem. They have to resolve it, but they're not going to add it to any future designs. So, why? So, who's going to pay for noise mitigation? And why would the city accept a proposition with a known problem that the builder preemptively refuses to correct? All I'm saying is that we, I'm not opposed to progress. I don't think anyone here is. I'm not opposed to tax revenue or viable options to improve Yukon. I love what Amy presented, because it, to me, fits Yukon like a glove. It fits all of those things, and those are places, she's right, that we all go and that we would enjoy doing. Do your due diligence. That's all I'm asking. And I know you have a hard job, and I know you work hard at it, and I know because we've worked hard at it, because we've looked at it and we've researched it. Address basic questions and quality-of-life concerns that affect the citizens who live here year-round, not just the ones who show up every three days for concerts. Venue says they're building the most luxurious amphitheaters in the world, which they will, quote, "take to the next level here in Yukon." And my question is, at what cost and at whose expense? Please assure us that you will protect those who have already invested in Yukon, its citizens. And it would not truly be a Bible-belt city meeting if I did not reference a Bible verse. So, here you go. It's Luke 6:38. "Give, and it will be given to you. A good measure, pressed down, shaken together, and running over, will be poured into your lap; for with the same measure that you use it, it will be measured back to you." I ask you to measure this venture objectively, realistically, and very, very carefully, remembering that Yukon is in this for the long game. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Suzie Grimes. I live at 508 Owen, O-W-E-N. I always spell that because somebody thinks I always do in 50801, so there you have it. I've lived in this fabulous, wonderful, beautiful city for fifty-eight years. And thirty of those fifty-eight years, I taught English here, seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. So, I've lived here probably longer than you all are old.
Not me.
And I just wanted to tell you, I love Mabel Fry Library. My minor is library science. My major was English. My minor is library science.
Ma'am, may I interrupt you, and I don't mean any offense by this. Would you, I don't want you to get into the Mabel Fry discussion.
Just say "library."
No, ma'am, but would you mind speaking during our visitor section? Could I kindly request of that? Because it's, we have to, under, fortunately or unfortunately, under our Open Meetings Act, we have to publish an agenda, and when we talk about specific agenda items...
Okay, this doesn't relate to the...
It doesn't relate to the library?
No, it doesn't relate to the amphitheater.
Okay. I'll hear you. You can speak during the visitor section, which is immediately after this. And I want to hear everything that you have to say.
In the words of Arnold Schwarzenegger, "I'll be back."
We saved your seat right here, ma'am. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry. I love my English teachers from high school, too. They're probably kind of proud of me, maybe. Does anyone else have a comment? In the visitor section, you can speak on any topic related to the city of Yukon, which can apply to broader amphitheater things. This specific item, if you have a specific comment about the $60,000 to fund the Venue feasibility study, and then we will have a visitor section, and you can speak on anything related to the city of Yukon. Mr. Spicer?
I apologize. I've got one more thing that I forgot to speak on. So, a couple others have touched on it about community involvement. I think I mentioned it in one of my emails to all of you as well. We have an economic development authority. Have they, I'd be curious if they've been consulting this. I think it'd be vital to get them involved in this and start, like so many of these wonderful people have said, Yukon's a great place to live. I don't think any of us disagree with that. But go out and market Yukon for the great, phenomenal city that it is. And I think that's their job. You look at the website and what it says that their task is, that's exactly what it is. I mentioned earlier, I think we're skipping steps, and I think that's one of those steps that we need to focus on. Turn them loose, let them do their job.
I completely agree with you, Mr. Spicer. I've consulted with one of the representatives that I have on the Economic Development Authority with regard to this matter. And I guess more broadly, one of the initiatives that I would like to work more closely on is, the last time our Economic Development Authority met, for those who are in the audience, was when the on-cue proposal came. And it was prior to my time on council. It was a little bit reactive, in my humble opinion. But I would really like for the Economic Development Authority to be very engaged, especially when we review professional work that gets done by experts in this field, when we're looking at significant investments. I completely agree with you on getting that more engaged. There's no reason that our Economic Development Authority should not meet, you know, we should have more things, great things going on in Yukon and market the great place that Yukon is. So, I would hope for at least a minimum quarterly meeting, and if we're really hopping, it should be monthly.
Absolutely. Same for the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, that's part of their...
Oh, the Chamber's doing great work, and yeah. So, I appreciate that sentiment.
Side note, some of their emails don't work, so we might need to update the website.
Some of the Economic Development Authority?
I got kicked back.
Great feedback. Thank you. Mr. Bryson. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I applaud you all for the job y'all are doing. I really mean that. It's a great city. I love living in it. I applaud the idea that you put out that we're going to have a feasibility study, vote, and you got your feasibility study without spending a dime. That is your feasibility study, and I think you got your money's worth.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. Any other comments on this? Mr. Spicer, a third time.
Third time's the charm.
Third time is the charm.
I do want to echo that. I've heard a lot of people that are against this feasibility study. I've heard a lot of people that are against the amphitheater. I haven't seen one in support of this feasibility study. I'd ask if there has been any emails. I know of a lot of emails that have been sent and gets sent. I'd ask, has there been any sent for it?
The short answer is yes. There were a few members that were not able to get in this evening. And at this time, I'll read something from Mr. Brian Nelms. I'll send the city clerk his street address later. He says, "Thank you, council members, for letting me speak. Grew up in Yukon with only a couple of short time periods. Have lived here my entire life. Over the years, I've watched Yukon pass up or over opportunities that would have been beneficial to the community. Yet over those same years, I've also constantly heard or read of citizens bemoaning how the streets are terrible, the lack of youth sports facilities, or they need upgraded, terrible traffic in certain areas, and the streets need to be expanded. They complain about poor infrastructure, or more recently, the city's hiring freeze, among other things. Yet anytime the citizens have a chance to vote to fix such problems and others, they constantly vote no on the chance that they will see them rectified. As a citizen myself, I want to see Yukon grow, continue to grow its infrastructure as well. If we want these problems fixed, I hear or read people talking about repair, then we need to increase our tax revenue and do it in such a way that it will continue to grow and not become stagnant. That is why we should vote for and support this venue." He goes on about some other things. I won't belabor the point, but the short answer is yes. You know, I think all the council members have heard from both sides. We've listened very actively. Everyone that has written to me, I think up until about noon today, has received a written response to them. I've had multiple phone calls. I've sat in people's living rooms. We've made ourselves available as a council, and that's really important to me, to listen. It's, I think it's a great brand of our city and of our council that we listen to our citizens.
Do we have a count of those for and against?
I'd say mine's about eighty-twenty.
Against, eighty?
Eighty against and about twenty percent for. And when I say twenty percent, probably about, I think I've received four emails for.
Yeah, I don't have a formal count, Preston.
Anybody else?
I don't have a formal count either. I've had about four against it today and about two for it today, via email and text, just today.
Yeah, in general, you know, when I think about, this isn't a popular vote at the end of the day. It's a focus on what's best for our community. We have to examine this with this feasibility study to understand that. It's going to take in all aspects of the examination and be a full-orb study, which includes the impact on the community. It's critical. And so, we're listening to those residents, but it, just in general, when people are adamantly against something, they're very vocal. When people are casually for something, they're pretty quiet. So, counting, just making some simple count, we would be doing a disservice to statistics. I mean, my English teachers, hopefully, are proud of me. My math teachers would be angry at me if we did that. But I hear exactly what you're saying, Preston, that it's important to listen.
It is, so you guys have an opportunity to prove your quality by listening to a lot of the people that did have time and did make the time to stay late and show up tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, Preston.
Hi. I'm Susan Broyles. My address is 620 Sidetrack Road. If you know anything about the Frisco Ridge neighborhood, mine is the farthest west street in the neighborhood. My backyard overlooks the field and the property in question. I've lived all over the metro area. I chose to move to Yukon for my family, for my kids. And now, I'm being told that the peace that we have decided to intake, because our lives are chaotic elsewhere, is now on the precipice. You're saying that this is a feasibility study. The feasibility of this has already been decided, and I think every single one of you know that this pig will not fly. Plain and simple. Look, I am all for development. I've seen things develop in Norman, where I've lived. I've seen things develop in Edmund, where I've lived. I've seen things soar. I've seen things fail. You cannot put all your eggs in one basket and expect to have anything in the end. That's not, this is not the solution. I'm asking this city council to just lay aside this feasibility, not for this project. You can seek out feasibility for any other project you want, but not this one. That's all I'm asking. Listen to your constituents that voted you into office and put it aside, please. Listen to your constituents that voted you into office and put it aside, please.
Thank you, Ms. Broyles. Do we have any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Randy Smith, 720 Villa Avenue. As I am understanding, y'all are discussing the feasibility and spending $60,000.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate your willingness and wanting to do your due diligence. My thought is, instead of doing it on the amphitheater, why aren't we looking at the best way to do a feasibility study that actually do the best good for this entire property over there, that is going to actually promote and push our state, or excuse me, our city forward? You've already talked about the infrastructure that you've taken. I didn't even really think about it, but my neighborhood, back in the Westport area, y'all did fix some of the concrete back there. Y'all are doing great things that I don't even really notice that y'all are doing. And this is one of the first times, yes, you're right, the squeaky wheel and everything, it's like, not in my backyard! But then I come in here and I hear some of the things that y'all have been doing that I was not aware of, and, and I'm really, and all of the work that y'all are putting forth. And so, I'm really happy that you want to spend $60,000 to do a feasibility, but we're looking at a feasibility of one small microcosm, when it should be looking at something that is going to actually benefit the entire area. How are we gonna use that new on cue? What can we really do? Instead of just one little minutia, if we could actually find a feasibility that would actually grow this area, there's a lot of property out there that could be benefited. But if you put this amphitheater in there, you're gonna shrink it down to parking and toilets, that's about all you're gonna get out of it. It's gonna be very narrow. But if you actually look at how we can actually expand Yukon into that and grow that area, we could have something that we could really be proud of. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, sir. May I get your-
Randy Smith, Randy Smith is his name.
Sorry.
He just wanted your name.
Oh, my apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir.
Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
No, we haven't voted.
Yes.
You ready for the vote?
Vice Mayor Wooten just said yes. Sorry, you, you called Wooten first?
Oh, yes. Pillmore.
Pillmore, yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Selby.
No.
At this time, we'll have our visitor's section of our agenda. And, Ms. Susan, please stand, I'm gonna say a few more words, and then you are up. Anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time, please state your name and address. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to the city of Yukon business. And as I said early, earlier, because this item is not an agenda item, other than the visitor's section, the council is not able to respond specifically to what you might state. Ms. Burns?
No, it's Grimes.
Grimes, I'm so sorry. I was bad at English.
Anyway, as I said, I love Maple Sea Fry Library. And I love their programs, and all of you have talked about how much you love that library, how much your kids love the library, how much they like the storytime, how much they like the, all of the summer programs. And I will tell you, the library is part of the lifeblood of this town. I've been there in the summer, when kids are in there, my goodness, you can't stir them with a stick, I'm telling you. And people are there all the time using our library, and it's a very, very valuable source for all of the citizens here in this town. And keeping the library fully staffed is in the city budget. And keeping it staffed fully is so vital to our community. And I've heard you all ex, use the expression that, that you've got some extra chickens. My suggestion is, gather these extra chickens, and since all of you love the library, use those extra chickens and fund the budgeted items of these to hire the people to fully staff the library. Keep that library a shining star that's here in our city of Yukon, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Grimes.
I just have one clarification. So, the, Amy McAllister, do I need to say my address?
No, we've got it, thank you, Ms. McAllister.
So, I just want to make sure I understood what just happened at the end of that last section. So, basically, Mayor Pillmore, Mr. Wooten, and Mr. Schreiber, you all three agreed to go ahead and proceed with this, no more than $60,000 feasibility study. Ten-four, that's all I just wanted to confirm.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Mr. Castle.
So, good evening, I'm Zach Castle, 728 Villa Avenue. And since this wasn't on the feasibility, this is more of a general message to the city council. And I'm glad I get to be here tonight. This is my hometown. I grew up here, I went to college and returned here, I got married here, and had a family all within two miles of my first home. And I've watched this city grow from a little farm town on the outside of the big city, to an grow, ever-growing city that hasn't lost that small-town charm that I still remember, and I remember as a kid. And so, I just want everyone to know that I do support growth here in the city of Yukon. But I support sustainable growth and development. And I just want to say this for the record, that an amphitheater or an open concert venue is not the right direction for this. Others tonight have very, much better than I have, highlighted the risks this amphitheater will bring to Yukon. But I just wanted to highlight the bright future that lies before us if we get the economic development of the Frisco property right. Amy McAllister offered her vision of what that land could become, and I couldn't agree more. And Mayor Pillmore, one of your goals has been to create a thriving entertainment and revenue-generating district. And that center, that district has the centerpiece, which is gonna be the star around which restaurants and other developments are gonna orbit. But this amphitheater isn't the right project, and venue is not the right developer. And I want you all to think about it. We've talked about the noise pollution, it's been well-covered, and I'm not going to rehash it here, but it will reduce the property taxes that the nearby neighborhoods will bring by projected thirty percent. And quite frankly, we have two amphitheaters already, one thirty minutes east and one thirty minutes west, here of Yukon. And there's also a ton of indoor venues. They're building one in Oklahoma City, a new one right now. They're repairing the mir, the form, what I still call the myriad. There's, it's an oversaturated market, this music venue is going to be. And venue really doesn't have a history of making sustainable outdoor music venues. Colorado Springs site is less than a year old, and hasn't even completed a full concert season because it came out in August. So, they missed three months, I think, four, three to four months of, of good concert time. And so, they're not gonna know how profitable that amphitheater is for another year, at least. So, that means, and I don't think I'm understating this, we would be an experiment for venue. And if it fails, we won't have a centerpiece for a thriving economic district, but we're just gonna have a corpse. But that isn't a reason to build nothing, to leave it blank, to leave it just empty farmland. I drive by that land every day. I'm in Westport, which apparently I've always just called Westport, and not West-Westport or Old Westport. But I drive by that land, that property, every day, and to me, it looks like a blank canvas. It's full of potential. And on that land, I see a place where I can take my family and enjoy a long day of fun and food, a place where I can see people I know, and people I've never met before. People who come from miles around to enjoy this amazing entertainment district. A place with high-end restaurants, walking trails, trees, places to shop, and things to do for the whole family. And a place that'll bustle, not just seventy nights a year, but something like three hundred days a year. And a place I want to live nearby. What kind of place is this? I have ideas. Some have already been mentioned tonight, some have been mentioned in this, and I want to be part of that journey. I want to be part of this journey that we take together, and there are other cities and other places that have tackled this same challenge before, and we need to learn from those successes. So, please, I know we've, you know, voted on the economic feasibility study, but I just want to reiterate, to not push a bad idea forward, and especially, we don't do it behind closed doors, consent dockets, and executive sessions. Let's explore ideas, reach out to businesses, and embody that same spirit of community that keeps me here in my hometown. And so, overall, I want to say, let's say no to the amphitheater and dream bigger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castle.
I have one thing I'd like to say. When you guys convened-
Madam, could you state your name and address?
Lisa Hobbs, 715 Kings Gate Road. And we met last week, and I appreciate you coming to the meeting. I want to say thank you to, to Ms. Selby, she is the lone woman on this panel, on the council. She's strong, and she asks questions, questions that nobody else asks, so I appreciate that. Even to things that I'm not particularly concerned about, she asked questions. So, you have a very strong member on your council. She's not just a yes person. But while you guys were convened, your wife and another person in this deal got into an argument. Your wife stood up, pointed at her and yelled at her. I think this is a safe place, that was very unprofessional. And you know you did it. I mean, there's people here, there's people here.
I stood up and I-
And you pointed at her and you, you said, "I'm not gonna stand here and listen to this and let you talk about my husband." That's not the pla, this is not the place, this is a safe place for us. I would never walk into my husband's business. And if I heard somebody say something negative, point him out, start yelling, and making a scene, and you did. It's inappropriate. Your spouse chose to be here. She's not, she doesn't have any fight in the game. It's not in her backyard, it's in our backyard. So, I would just say, in the future, we should be able to come here and not have to worry about being attacked verbally by a spouse for something she didn't like that was said. And the conversation I heard wasn't anything bad being said. So, I would appreciate that in the future, from, from you and from me.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbs.
Hi, Micah Pillmore, 701 Kingston Drive. I would just like to publicly apologize if that is what you guys heard. I was hearing some information that I felt like was incorrect and just wanted to voice that, and just try to correct what was being said. I'm very sorry if that was offensive, that was not my intention, ever. I felt like something incorrect was said, and I, every person on this council, you guys, works their tails off. And I want that to be acknowledged, and I feel like it wasn't being acknowledged, and it is hard to sit when I see not just my husband, this council. I mean, they're making the big bucks, guys. And they're working hard.
Severo.
And so, I, I want to apologize, I, I apologize. And, and if, if, if I, if, if you were offended by that, I apologize. But, but they've worked tirelessly, and they have answered every email, and that's all I was trying to say. They have met, they've emailed, and they're listening to their constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Fred Hockett. I live at 727 Kings Gate Road in Yukon, Westport. What you just said about you guys working tirelessly and do your job, you need to do away with this. And your feasibility, leave this amphitheater out of it. There's nothing good to come from this, it's not the right thing. I'm not against businesses, you can build all the businesses you want to out there, do whatever you want, but this is not the right path. So, when you do this feasibility, not only on that, you do it on the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockett.
Good evening, Amy Walters, 915 Stone Creek Boulevard in Yukon. The feasibility study, so, just correct me, is it only for venue, or is it a study for our blank canvas?
Uh, Ms. Walters, we're not able to respond during the visitor's section.
Okay, okay.
But we appreciate your question, and you could certainly follow up, you know, you can follow up in writing to the council, or call any of your council persons.
Just wondering if, I would hate if we do go straight with that, to at least look at something that would bring revenue to our community five or seven days a week, and not seventy nights a year. Something that would be more lucrative. I think if we want tax dollars, why stop for seventy nights? I just don't see personally that people are gonna be spending a lot of money in our community. Christmas in the park, I know some people do some shopping, come into a concert, I don't see a big shopping trip, a big grocery trip, a big anything, come to the concert, leave town, and I don't think there are the tax dollars that are in your eyes that are gonna come. I, I just don't see it. So, again, looking at something that'll bring tax dollars, again, five to seven days a week, and quit the limit of seventy nights. Why restrict us? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walters.
Good evening. It's probably most of our bedtime, but anyway, I'm Stephanie Burdine, 515 Maple. I am not in the neighborhood directly by there, but I'm in the neighborhood just on the other side of Garth Brooks, where all the houses are old and aren't gonna like to be shook. But I don't think that, I'm not against developing that area at all, but I don't think that the answer is a company that wants us to put in forty percent of the cost. If they're a publicly traded company, they need to foot the bill on this if you're going to choose to grow that route, which I don't think it's a good route. We've only got twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand people in Yukon, that's not enough to support forty million dollars or fifty million dollars. Where, where would that money come from that they're gonna need? Okay, yeah, we sell them the land, there's gonna be some money, but what if, what's gonna happen if he goes out of business and we're stuck? Oh, oh, yeah, and we gotta give Oklahoma City fifty percent of any money we make for fifteen years? I don't think, I want it, I, I don't think the city needs to be the experiment, the citizens do not need to be the experiment to see if Mr. Roth's dream of getting in the music business works. I want something that is a proven, a Costco, a top, something that does, that when it gets built, it does generate money. This guy has no track record, and for the amount of money that we would have to spend, it's, it's an unproven commodity, and I think it's just too big of a risk for our town to take on because we don't, we, our population and our city limits are too small for what this guy wants to do. And, like I said, I'm not against it, I'm all for, you all want economic development, you all want volunteers to help figure stuff out, I'm all in, I'm all in. I love this town, we were, the house I live in now, we were gonna turn it into an Airbnb, we were gonna be part of it, but when you get to be our age, we realize staying in them and maintaining one are two different things, and I didn't want to work that hard anymore. So, that, I just, we're a, we're a community, we're all kind of family here, so, just please listen to us, and I have not called you all, I have emailed but not called, and I will be in contact because I want what's best- because I want what's best for this town. And Mr. Roth's copycat dream is not the answer for what's best for the citizens of Yukon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ronnie Short, 970 Dover Mansion, here in Yukon. So I've stood before this council numerous times pleading for relief at the growing dangers on Dover Mansion. The increased traffic in our neighborhood and excessive speeding caused by existing and ongoing new development, River Mesa addition, continue to put our children, grandchildren, residents at serious risk. This not only, this is not only an inconvenience, it's a life-threatening issue. Residents can no longer feel safe entering or exiting their driveways. The danger of our children are undeniable. I am here once again to make sure the city council understands the seriousness of the situation. I plead with you to help in keeping the families safe. We must act before tragedy occurs. Hand them those. The numbers speak for themselves. The following data comes directly from the Yukon Police Department Survey Description Reports. Between March 5, 2024, and April 9, 2024, 31 days, a total of 27,937 vehicles traveled down our street. Based on Deputy Chief Brown's data and Mayor Pillmore's estimate from the council meeting held on January 14, 2025, if 1 in 50 vehicles were excessively speeding, that's 599 speeding vehicles in just one month. If 1 in 75 vehicles were excessively speeding, that's 375 vehicles in the same period. That means 12 to 18 cars per day are speeding in our neighborhood. And these numbers do not account for recent and ongoing construction that will increase traffic even more. Additionally, it is important to clarify that Dover Mansion also includes River Mesa, which has been renamed Dover Mansion, but still is yet to be updated in Google Maps. I think this has caused some confusion on official discussions. Residents are united in this request. We have signed petitions from nearly every neighbor on our street on Dover Mansion between Smoking Oaks Drive and Oasis Lane. The only two households that did not sign the petition were not opposed to the speed devices, they were simply unavailable for signatures. We request that the city conduct a site assessment for the speed cushion replacement, or placement. We seek a meeting with city council officials, traffic engineers, to discuss implements, addressing previous concerns about speed devices. At prior council meetings, it was suggested that calming devices would be detrimental to vehicles and create a liability for the city. However, the reliability, other residential streets across Yukon, both old and new, already have speed bumps, as known as calming, street calming devices. If vehicles were obeying the posted speed limits, these devices would not cause harms to vehicles. What is the real liability? A minor inconvenience for drivers or loss of a child's life? Speed cushions are a proven effective and widely adopted solution to balance safety and practicality. Dover Mansion was never meant to be a thoroughfare. Residents, hearing other drivers themselves, that they view Dover Mansion as a major road or a cut-through, with one driver even justifying his speed, saying the speed limit is 35 miles an hour, and it's a thoroughfare, but it is not. The residential street, our families should feel safe in their own neighborhood. We're asking you to take action. This is not just, not just about convenience, it's about safety. How much is a child's life worth? How much is a parent's life worth? What will it take for the council to act? An accident or a fatality? We are begging the council to listen to our voices and our family who live here and are pleading with you to install speed calming devices.
Thank you so much, Mr. Short. I appreciate you speaking on this topic. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing this information. Are there any other speakers that would like to speak in this visitor's section? Ms. Hobbs?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, no problem.
I have a lawsuit that was filed against J.W. Roth and MUD from shareholders that invested in, and I actually shared that with you the other day. I have copies that I would like to pass out to the council members.
Feel free to approach. Thank you.
It would be important to know who we're trying to get. Zimmerman.
Councilmember Zimmerman, you can give it to the deputy clerk and she will label it for his attention. Oh, okay, no problem. Thank you, Ms. Hobbs. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in this visitor's section? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Delaine Hockett. I live at 727 Kings Gate Road in Westport West. I have a question to the council. I don't know who would answer. I'd like to know...
Ma'am, ma'am, this is the visitor's section. We are not able to answer your question, but you may pose it. It will be rhetorical in nature, though.
Okay, well, I wondered when, when you have the feasibility examination, investigation done, that's passed, are we informed? How will we know what was, what you guys have decided after seeing that? Or do we get caught? How does that work?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're not able to answer that question, but I recommend, as many of your friends and neighbors have, they've sent emails to the council. Feel free to send us an email. I guarantee you, you're going to get a response.
You're going to answer when I send it?
Ask Ms. McAllister here, she'll fill you in.
Okay.
Any other discussion here for the visitor's section? Thank you all for speaking on this. Madam Clerk, is there any new business?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the floor for each council person to say a few words in closing. This item is reserved for announcements, recognition, et cetera. It's not intended for the conduct of city business by the members of the public body. Councilmember Selby.
Yes, I just want to say, this is what democracy looks like. You come, you voice your opinion, we listen, we weigh the pros and cons, and we make our decision. And then you get to make a decision again when election time comes. And so you do, you come and you get to speak and we listen. And so I thank you for doing that. Also, I'd like to say, congratulations to our H.B. Frank Citizen of the Year, Mr. Mitchell Horton, please stand. As an H.B. Frank recipient, it's a great honor to be named the Citizen of the Year. And what I'd like to say is thank you for all your effort and your work. He is tirelessly behind the scenes, working hard for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Selby. Councilmember Shriver.
Yeah, I would like to come up with a little speech to say, after the week we've had of emails and phone calls, we sit before you not only as one of your city members, but as a fellow member to this community. As for myself, I've been a member for over 40 years, my family for well over 100. I'd like to address an issue that's been weighing heavy, impacts our ability to serve you efficiently. Decorum and professionalism in all interactions. I must express my concern over the recent instance where some of the council members have been threatened, talked down to, and subject for disrespectful language. Let me be clear, none of this is acceptable. Threats will not be tolerated. And I assure you, at that point, your voice becomes unheard. I understand that emotions can run high in decisions about our city's future. It is crucial to remember that we can disagree without being disagreeable. Our democracy thrives on healthy debates, where every voice is heard and every opinion is respected. We must prioritize civil discourse and choose engagement with one another constructively. As you representatives, we are committed to serving you with integrity and respect, and we will ask the same in return. Let us together foster a culture of decorum and professionalism. Together, we can create a community where individuals feel valued and where the difference can be celebrated, not scorned. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shriver. Vice Mayor Wooten.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I appreciate all your emails and your calls and your time to voice your opinion on this. Mitch, congrats. I know you love the spotlight. That's an awesome award, so congratulations, sir. Well, you're seen right now, so good job. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Wooten. Some events coming up. The Yukon Senior Games, April 4 to the 12th. They're held at various locations in Yukon. There's a $15 registration fee, plus $5 per event. The senior games events are pickleball, billiards, archery, golf, basketball, fitness, table tennis, bowling, washer pitching, cornhole, horseshoes, track and field, and creative arts. Deadline to sign up is midnight tonight, so for all you folks, it's...
There's still time.
There's still time. And Festival of the Child, a wonderful event held at City Park. Advance tickets are $5 per child, day-of tickets are $7 per child, adults are free. Over 60 activities, I highly recommend this, the petting zoo, the pony rides, food trucks, flatables, it's just pure fun for the kids. And then lastly, an organization that many people don't know about because it's kind of hidden, but it's right in the middle of town, Yukon's own Kelly Farm Trails, which is a mountain bike trail right in the middle of Yukon, right by St. John's Nipamuck Church, is forming a youth mountain biking team. It's part of Oklahoma's first National Interscholastic Cycling Association League. Team registration's open as of today. One of the coaches, John Henson, is hosting a meet and greet at the trail, and that's at the Kelly Farm Trails, there across from the middle school area and next to the church. On Thursday, April 3, between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., the address is 304 Garth Brooks Boulevard, just north of St. John's. Look it up online at oklahomamtb.org. That's mount, that stands for mountain bike, MTB, oklahomamtb.org. And lastly, I'll say, echo the vice mayor's comments, love having the engagement. We've had great conversations in living rooms, great conversations via phone, and in different public venues around Yukon, our wonderful coffee shops. Appreciate everyone voicing their opinion. And I'll echo Councilman Shriver's voice that the minority of people, a very, very tiny minority, express threats, and they're just unacceptable. It's just unacceptable. We do not engage in any political violence. I've mentioned to some of our neighbors here that have spoken this evening, I've responded to every single person's inquiry, with the exception of two, that made threats of violence. So that's all I have to say, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.